Can I get a motion that the closed meeting be closed and the board certifies that to best of each member's knowledge, that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting to which this certification applies, and only such business matters as were identified in the motion concerning the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered?
I have a motion from Mrs. Garner, a second from Mr. Campbell. We'll call.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes. At this time, if you all would please stand for our pledge of allegiance at a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Nichols, the floor is yours.
Thank you, sir, and members of the board. Tonight we have relatively light agenda with some very important information and thanks to be extended. We had a great dinner tonight, thanks to the Farm to Table organization that's working with the Food Hub, and Ms. Moore is going to be presenting. Thanks for that.
And I'm sorry, I didn't have my mic on. So, I'll say that again. Ms. Moore, would you be prepared to start us off with presentation of the Farm to Table program?
I'd like to thank these ladies for providing us a very nice dinner tonight. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board members, and Mr. Nichols. This evening, we will have a presentation from some of the local extension agents. They will be working with the Southside Growers Association. We will be participating this year in a program with them to bring Farm to School to our schools for District Eight, Section Eight. So, I'm going to turn it over to them and let them introduce themselves, and we'll go through the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the board, and Mr. Nichols. We didn't come here tonight just simply to feed you really well, we also wanted to bend your ear a little bit and to promote Farm to School activities, and to tell you a little bit more about why we wish to pilot such a program in Mecklenburg County public schools. First, let me introduce myself. I'm Nicole Schuman. I'm the Community Food Systems Agent in Prince Edward County, which is also in Region Eight. With me, I have Katie Overby, who is the Agriculture and Natural Resources Extension Agent in Prince Edward County, and Joanne Jones, who is the Agriculture and Natural Resources Agent in Charlotte County. We have a number of other partners in this endeavor, they couldn't all be with us tonight. Wanda Johnson from VSU, who helped prepare the food you enjoyed, Leonard Elam, who's the Small Farm Outreach Agent, various farmers from the Southside Fruit and Vegetable Growers Association, and Taylor Clark, who is your Extension Agent in Mecklenburg and is involved with some school garden projects, and then on the state level, Trista Grigsby, who's in charge of the Farm to School program. So, what is Farm to School, and why should you do it? Do you want to, next slide, Katie? So, it is not a single thing, but rather a suite of different activities that school districts can choose from and sort of tailor that menu of activities to their particular needs as a school. But it has basically three core components, part of which is procurement. This is the part that we are working with the Southside Fruit and Vegetable Growers Association with, essentially getting more locally grown foods actually into cafeterias prepared by school nutrition staff and served to students. We live in a really abundant area of the county, and students should be more aware of what they have literally outside their back doors. The second part of this is going to be school gardens, and so, school gardens will look different for each school and for each school district depending on the resources available. These might take the form of garden clubs, school gardens that the agriculture teachers and agriculture students engage in. There's many different ways of structuring those. And finally, the education component. This is really important because agriculture relates to how we use our natural resources. They are great classrooms, they are great learning environments for students to engage with the natural world, especially for our kinesthetic learners, they can provide really valuable educational activities. And additionally, nutritional education. As we see in an increasing obesity crisis in the United States, we think it's really important that our students learn from the youngest age possible about the benefits of eating fresh fruits and vegetables, and certainly when they help grow it themselves or see where it comes from, this can promote enthusiasm. Next slide, Katie? So, in the 2013 to 2014 school year, close to $8 million was spent on local procurement or procurement of foods grown in Virginia. This doubled from 2013 to '14 to 2016 to '17, and Ms. Pamela Northam has, or I'm sorry, it didn't quite double, but, and First Lady Pamela Northam has issued the challenge of increasing us by that same amount again to 22 million in locally procured foods by 2022. We think this is a very achievable goal, and it's with the, with programs like in Mecklenburg that we're seeking to demonstrate this. Next slide. So fundamentally, we believe that Farm to School is critical because kids win, they get some really beneficial and engaging learning opportunities, they get exposed to new fruits and vegetables, to healthy leading habits. Farms win because more of, more local dollars go to local farms, and, and local farms are local businesses to help support them. And various studies have demonstrated that a dollar spent locally can generate up to a dollar and 40 cents in economic activity in that locality, and this means that communities win and schools win, because by increasing economic activity, we all know that we increase the tax base, and that's how our public schools function. So, we think that Farm to School is a really good way for communities to marry various, very varied interests. We, as extension agents, are here to help and support this through a variety of ways, connecting the dots if need be, providing nutrition education, support to the agriculture teachers as they engage in school gardens, especially through 4H programming and other things like that. So, we are here for your questions and to support you in all that you do, and I think Joanne is going to speak a little about the Southside Fruit and Vegetable Growers Association.
Good evening. Now that you've heard a little bit about Farm to School, we wanted to get you a little more acquainted with the Southside Virginia Fruit and Vegetable Growers Association. So, I'm going to take you on a little field trip through these slides so that you can meet some of the growers that actually grew some of the produce that you consume tonight. Right? This association formed almost a year ago, and the association is used to promote improvements in the business of commercial vegetable and fruit grower, to promote better public relations, and to develop fellowships and to serve its constituents in every reasonable manner. This is one of our growers, this is Arch Lynn Farm, and as you can see, and you will see on many of these picture slides, most of these farmers grow a multitude of produce, and most all of them are like a grassroots organization, and they're family-based. So, you could see squash, you've got some of your cold crops, onions, potatoes in the background there, and one of the unique things with this group, there are several of them that have high tunnels, which are greenhouses, but you don't have to heat those, which gives an extended growing season. So, when things are done outside, they can still produce these commodities and get them to the schools or other businesses beyond the normal growing season. All right? This is Seven Springs Farm, and he mostly grows our sweet corn, so you'll see him here in his, in his cornfield and with his corn planter. All right? And this is Baker's Farm Fresh. He grows a lot of things, but one of the big things he grows is green beans. So, these are his green beans, but here again, he grows squash, tomatoes. Most of these farmers grow a wide variety of produce. And then this is Willowland Farm, and here he is in his, in his high tunnel with tomatoes. Well, the last slide was just a thank you for your time, and we hope you enjoy the meal tonight, and then it had the website for the Produce Growers Association. So, if you want, you can go back, Robyn's got that, and she can send to you. So, on that website are all the farms that are right now in that entity, so you can get to know them more, and there's more information, there's a little write-up about each farm on there, what generation they are. And one of the unique things with this is all the members are gap certified, which means they go through a very heavily involved process to be able to put the production out of these vegetables, and that they're monitored for like sanitation, their water is, goes through several sampling procedures throughout the growing season to make sure that they're getting a good wholesome, healthy product to you as the end source. So, thank you for your time, and are there any questions?
Board members, any questions? Well, we do want to thank you as well. Dinner was wonderful.
Thank you.
And we do do a lot of work with agriculture in our programs. I think one of our ag teachers was here earlier from the middle school, might still be here, I just don't see her.
We met her earlier.
Okay. And that's been very exciting, as we've been building on Environmental Science Academy. We've worked with the Food Hub in South Hill, we have some of the elementary schools that have been doing some gardening, and so, this is another continuation, we're very thankful for it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Ms. Moore, thank you as well. Next, we want to give you some information about our new buses. Some of, a couple of you were able to join us for this, but we wanted the whole team to have a chance to see some and ask information about the new buses this year, and Mr. Mayhew has come prepared with some pictures, I think, to be able to share.
Good evening, Vice Chair, Board members, Superintendent Nichols. Yeah, on August the 7th, we were fortunate enough to be joined by Ms. Garner, Mr. Sardifin, Superintendent Nichols, and Assistant Superintendent Jeffers to hand out our new buses. We were able to purchase 15 this year. We had 13 regular ed and two special ed buses. If I can get this thing to work, maybe. There we go. And we handed them out on August the 7th, a few days ahead of the start of school. We also was able to obtain a grant from the EPA to take anything 98, 98 mile a year and older off of the road. We had to destroy the engine, cut the frame, and stuff like that, and we were, we were given $20,000 per bus, and for 10 buses, that's $200,000 from the EPA, and that helped with our purchase on the new buses. Drivers were extremely happy about getting them, especially with the AC and coming at a good time with the hot summer that we had this year. And we hand them out by seniority, you know, drivers have been here the longest, and then we take, move their buses down the list as well. So, seems to be working out very well, everybody's satisfied, and we've got a, got a good fleet of buses now, and fortunately, we've got all of the old GMCs off of the regular routes. You might see a few run around as a spare, but the old, the old ones are off the road now, hopefully for good, so. Any questions?
Explain to everybody about the cameras that are on there.
Oh, yes, the new camera system we got on here, it's, it's with the same company, but just a different version. It's with Gatekeeper, and we've got three cameras positioned throughout the bus, one on each side, and then one at the front, but it gives a 180-degree view. You can actually see behind the seats, and actually cover the entire interior of the bus. So, well, we've always had problems with, you know, if somebody sliced a seat, you couldn't actually see who done it, but now, you can see everything, so. It's a, it's a, it's a great, great system. Matter of fact, I pulled one this morning and looked at it, and you can, you can zoom in close enough to see the screen on the telephone. So, it's going to work out very well.
And hard drive capabilities of these are better so that you can not have to worry about them giving out in the middle of a...
Yes, sir. I thought I had one in my pocket, but I don't. Yeah, actually, the hard drives in the old system we had, it's about that big, and they run about $360 apiece, where these take an SD card, and of course, the company said the ones at Walmart don't work, but they work. 29 bucks, you know, and you can slap one in there, it works, so. We're real satisfied with that. And they, that'll run about, with a 256, that'll run about maybe 14, 15 days. So, principals get us the information, you know, real quick, we can snatch it, and we'll always have the, have the video there, so.
Mrs. Bailey?
Mr. Mayhew, this is, thank you for that. This is an unrelated question, and it just occurred to me, and so, if you don't know the answer, that's fine. The activity buses that we purchased year before last, we've had a whole academic year now with those buses now in the fleet, is that, are they saving us mileage on our regular buses the way we had anticipated?
Yes, ma'am.
And they're running well?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
And, and the smaller activity buses, is that getting some use?
Yes, ma'am. The golf team uses that a lot, and a lot of teams that have, you know, 10 to 12, 15, they use it. It's supposed to hold 29, but 29 high school students on there is packed.
Right.
So, you know, anywhere from 15 to 18, but, but yes, it does, it gets used quite a bit.
Okay. And just, just to follow up to that, the policy regarding how those buses are used, typically, you look at the length of the trip that the team is going, and they're kind of doled out that way. Can you just refresh our memory on that, please?
Yes, ma'am. It's actually, we, the elementary school academic trips get priority, and then the academic trips for the middle and high, and then when it comes down to the sports, the farthest trip that goes, goes away gets the, gets the activity buses. Now, when we get to playoffs and stuff like that, we try to let them use them too, because most times, they are, you know, that's pretty good distance travel. But we kind of use them for the, for the academic elementary stuff to replace charter buses, so we can use, you know, use them. The only difference, you know, these don't have restrooms, but we can plan a trip out of where you can stop.
Sir, thank you so much.
One other question, Mr. Mayhew, real quick, I'm sorry. Mr. Nichols, what are the capacity of the new buses?
Capacity, new, 64.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, our shop won't allow us to go any bigger.
Okay.
Because we can't lift them on the lift enough.
Okay.
Any more questions?
Any other questions, board members? Thank you, Mr. Mayhew.
And thank you all for allowing us to get them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayhew, we appreciate it. Item C on our agenda, board members, has to do with, again, VSBA policy updates. It's not deep this time, but we do have a couple of updates that Mr. Jeffers is going to bring to our attention.
Thank you, Chair Honeycutt, members of the board, and Superintendent Nichols. We do have just a few items to bring for you this evening. First of all, you'll recall for our, dealing with our vaping and tobacco use policy, GBE-C. That policy, which you adopted back in June, does mandate that a regulation be developed by superintendent, and that, that regulation is before you tonight, GBE-C dash R. This will be your first chance to look at that. It's basically outlining the penalties that may be assessed upon our employees, our students, or visitors and guests to our campuses that may be using nicotine or vaping in any form or fashion.
So, was that part of our packet, Mr. Jeffers?
It is, yes. GBE-C dash R.
Maybe I need to refresh, because I'm not seeing it. Do y'all see it?
I didn't see that either.
Oh, I see it. It's, the R is there.
Yeah.
Gotcha. All right. I see it now, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. The second one we have, there was some, I think some concern of the school board, as you know, July 1st, the state law allows the CBD oil and THC A oil to be treated as basically any other controlled substance, and that, so they explicitly exempted our school nurses from dispensing that should a prescription arise. However, we do want to make sure that the CBD oils and THC's are not seen as a, something we would like to welcome into our schools, so they, you see policy JFC, which is our student code of conduct, the overall conduct, and then JFC dash R, which is the portion I shared with you, is only item 29. And so, in those two policies, inserted the CBD oil or THC oil, THC A oil, in a place that seemed to make some sense as to where that would fit into our policy to explicitly list those as items we would not want to see in our schools. So, you can take a look at those. Again, these are for your first review tonight, and we'll look for the pleasure of the board in September. The final item is a leave request form, and we just, you know, one of those things, we found the leave request form had not been before the board as a regulation, and it was, it was actually referring to the prior board documents. So, we just have the updated request for leave form for your review tonight. This is what we propose to use internally. We, we will be looking at this again in the springtime, thinking about maybe business days and personal days, and how we're going to think about those, but we would like to have the correct regulation, and that would be this form that we're putting before you tonight.
And these are for your review for action next month, but if there are questions, we'll take them now. If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jeffers. We appreciate it. Item D, I'd like to give you some updates from our summer activities. Several, as we mentioned, the buses, there are several other things that we would like to bring to the board and the public's attention that were very positive from the summer. As far as technology is concerned, we have leased 500 new Chromebooks, we've leased 500 new laptops, we've purchased 400 Chromebooks to replace outdated devices, we have 25 new laptops for administrators, we have over 75 devices now in CTE that will be worked into the system, 72 ClearTouch interactive panels, 62 to be deployed, and seven additional ones that will be here this week, and three others for CTE. And we've made significant progress on the final laptop lease to be complete next summer so that we'll have full Chromebooks, grades 1 through 12. And so, we're very pleased with those additions with our technology program. So, are we not at a one-to-one initiative now? Well, we have the one-to-one classroom initiative. Okay. Which actually is better than a one-to-one initiative, because we are making students available, instead of giving one to each student, for the reasons that we've had, we make them available in the classroom, and when they move from one to another, sometimes it's fewer students in the classroom than the classroom before. So, we are, we're fully capable of a one-to-one initiative at this point, and we would be, we are making plans, as the board has suggested, onto how we implement that with the variety of details related to what are the responsibilities of parents, what are the responsibilities of students, how do we work with scenarios where there is internet access required but not available in the homes, how do we make sure, one of the biggest issues is electricity and making sure that the laptops are fully powered when they come back. But we know it's time to begin moving into that one-to-one option, and so, we are working towards the procedures that would go into that to bring to the board this year. So, is that, is that something that we're looking to do for start of school for next year? Well, we're talking about ways of piloting it this year to make sure that we're covering our actions, and then hopefully move to something more permanent for all, at least large sections, maybe at the high school, and then move into the middle or other way around. That's a conversation that's being held.
I have a question about the ClearTouch boards.
Yes.
Are they just going in classrooms where the existing Promethean boards died, or how are we just deciding where they go?
They are replacing the older materials, that's correct. So, they would be where they would be died.
So, where the Promethean boards were bad.
Right, but you will, you will remember, the older Promethean boards were the ones that were firmly attached. There are no more of those, we're getting the ones, and specifically keeping in mind that as we move to the new building, we will be building up to make sure we have enough Promethean boards, or of the ClearTouch boards to go into each of the classrooms there. And that's in the five-year plan, maintenance plan for updates. Mr. Nichols, how many do we buy this year? The ClearTouch? Yes. 72 is what I have here. And they've already...
62 are on the way.
There's 62 that have been deployed, seven that are still, or 10, seven from regular and three for CTE. Yes, 72 altogether. And they've been implemented through the division? Yes, sir. Okay. Any other questions on the technology? I'd also like to report that we had in maintenance, we have new custodians in place, as you know, from approval of the personnel agenda. They've been through their training, they have a handbook, and I don't know if you had a chance to go into some of our schools, but we've gotten lots of comments that the schools have never been cleaner. So, we're hoping that that's going to work out very, very well for the upcoming year. I don't know if you have any thoughts or questions from Mr. Dalton on that, but we're very pleased at that addition. It's dark in here, so I can't see the administrators, everybody.
That's a night shift, right?
I want to be able to see your eyes. None of you. Mr. Dalton, I think there are some questions, if you want to. Did you have a question?
The new ones are more of an evening shift?
Yes, sir. Most of our evening shift is 2:30 to 11 o'clock.
Now, will the AC and heat stay on for them?
Currently, it is, we are unoccupying the building, but keep in mind, it does not cut off, so it's still stirring, it's just at a higher set point.
Okay. I mean, I just think they don't need to be in there sweating to death.
No, it's not, it's not that uncomfortable.
I will say, I went into three schools this past Thursday, and it was amazing at how clean the floors were and had nicest smell. It did not smell like a school or sweaty socks. It really smelled good.
Well, good, yes, ma'am, they've done a great job.
Been there longer.
And Mr. Dalton, like I said in the finance meeting, thank you for your efforts, and the grounds, again, I've been around to every school the last couple of weeks, and the grounds and all look spectacular, so...
Yes, sir. Green Acres really did a great job this year, as they always do.
Yes, sir, but it just, it looked exceptionally well this year, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd also like to bring your attention, of course, you had the meal, so you have heard from Ms. Moore about food service, but we have started with the CEP, 100% of our students at elementary schools are getting free and reduced-priced lunch this year, and so far, that has been very well received. You will remember in our conversation, we talked about numbers at Clarksville, South Hill, and La Crosse would have to meet a certain level for us to be able to be successful with that, and so far, we're pretty far exceeding those numbers with the food that's been out there, and the students that are taking advantage of it. Now, that's at the elementary schools. The secondary schools are not fully, we're still having to get the numbers, and, and what we have so far, those schools has been down some, but there could be many, many reasons for that. That's not something that's going to be of, you know, financial concern to us, except for those who don't pay. So, anyway, we're very pleased at those numbers so far, and the students seem to be very excited about the food opportunities and new opportunities that are coming along. Our numbers overall, the first of the year, are somewhat comparable, some of the schools are down. I will say that we've gotten data from the state that indicates that the projections from the state overall continue to decline, and we don't know when we'll bottom out on some of that and if we'll see some increase. That's, that's true in rural areas, rural divisions all over the state. You may have noticed that the Secretary of Education and the governor have looked at, with the state board, have looked at new standards of quality that would hopefully be more helpful to our rural school divisions as far as some of the issues that that brings to us, and as the legislation comes up this year, we'll be certainly bringing that to your attention. And I also would like to point out that we had a convocation that seemed to be very well-received, very successful with the teachers, some of you were able to be there. We had Mr. Jeremy Anderson, who was, gave an outstanding presentation. I've heard all very, very positive upbeat comments from that, and I think we're going to be looking to try to find a way to get him back into the system. So, we're excited about that. One last piece that I'll bring to your attention from the summer, there's a slide that goes along with this. From the perspective of our work on profile of a Mecklenburg graduate and the state's expectation, we've been putting together meetings with the state board of job shadowing and altern, not alternative ed, but apprenticeships and things of that nature. Each of these areas that you see popping up on the screen for Mecklenburg Public Schools and movement that we're taking are components that we've had to be looking at. There's a lot of components in this that are new for everybody, the five Cs, the integration of the five Cs, work-based learning, grade-specific targets, registered youth apprenticeships, badge tracking requirements, these are many of the areas that we'll be bringing you information, our partnerships with SECCE and others. I would let you know, for example, that we had the idea and you approved... I would let you know, for example, that we had the idea, and you approved the idea, that we would be inviting homeschool students to participate in our CTE programs, and we would get the opportunity for them to count as the amount of ADM for us to help with our low enrollment numbers. We have six students that have taken advantage of that, three from Bluestone and three from Parkview, that are taking some of our classes in CTE program and are very excited about that. So we're, we're making progress, and there's a lot of work to be done, and I'm sure through the year, you'll be hearing many more things about that. But I did want to bring those to your attention as we talk about the summer and answer any other questions that you might have. Oh, one other thing, the career exploration. We welcomed two of our teachers that have been shifting from academics to the career in an investigation teaching program at Parkview Middle School and at Bluestone Middle School. They are still working on the curriculum components for that. It's going to be a huge piece for us, demanded by the state. And then adding to that piece, as we move on to item E, the Go Tech Initiative, I've mentioned it before, but the Region Three Go Virginia program is put together a huge grant, and we are receiving and purchasing information that will give students in middle schools some direct interaction with those programs and that equipment for jobs, and we're looking forward to having the, the career investigation teachers at the appropriate time work with that as well.
Mr. Nichols, just a question about the homeschool students that are participating in our CTE classes. I know that from time to time, some of our elective classes are full. You know, enrollment in certain classes are, are cut off because that class may be full for whatever reason.
Right.
So I know that we get additional revenue from these homeschool students that come to us, but I just want to make sure that none of our students who are full-time enrolled here would not be.
Displaced.
Displaced from the CTE class because of that type of enrollment.
From the very beginning, that's been the point.
Okay, thank you very much.
That they are available to where we have room. And in these cases, that's what they took was positions. In fact, we had an agreement with the Higher Ed Center for their Megatronics and IT Academy, and we had not been able to fulfill that agreement with them. So we were glad to have them come in and work with us and using that and get support for it.
Thank you for clarifying that.
All right. Item F, every year, we must update our school, school crisis plans, and of course, that is something that is critical for us. It's been a critical component as we have been building and developing the plans for the new schools, the new secondary schools. We had a meeting two weeks ago to review those crisis plans. We had participation in that meeting with our emergency services director from Sheriff Hawkins, from members of the Gang Task Force, from the South Hill Police Department, the La Crosse Police Department, and state police that were available. And they looked over the plans, so I have included, there's one for each of the schools. I have included that in your package. We have to make it known to the state that the board has reviewed and seen the policy. It's not something to pass, but it's something for you to, that you have seen. So we were very pleased to have that turn out, and there's some significant questions came, some significant plans for the future, but I think it was very well-received by those who were there, able to be there. And I'll see if there are any questions that came up about that.
I have a couple.
Yes, sir.
Reading it, the principal is basically the incident commander, right?
Yes, from the, from the school's perspective.
But once?
Once the police arrive on, right, they take over.
They take over.
Yes.
But that's not in?
Okay. I'd have to go back myself to check and see if that had been specifically pointed out.
Because what I read, it didn't, and I mean, everybody has got enough common sense, I think, to do that, but if you get somebody hyped up and the sheriff comes and they say, no, I'm in charge, we're doing this.
Right.
That, that's not going to go over well.
Well, yeah, that's a good point. That's a very good point.
I think just a sentence, once whatever emergency services arrive, then the principal becomes a liaison for the Mecklenburg County Schools to emergency services.
Right. Very good point.
Because you got in here that they're going to choose the command post. So how's the principal going to choose a command post when they have no tactical or emergency services experience? They may pick one that's great, that is not.
Appropriate for, right.
Yeah.
Right.
Because of space and everything that's going on. That's just my question.
No, well, it's a good point, and we will go back and take a look at that, because it's not, we have not yet turned this into the state. We have the opportunity to make that adjustment. That's one of the reasons we're bringing it to the board.
And I mean, I think just one sentence, once, once whatever emergency services shows up to handle a situation, they become.
The co-
Incident commander. The principal then becomes a liaison between Mecklenburg County School System.
And the- Okay.
And if, I mean, they need to go ahead and pick a command post, but if emergency services says, no, that's not going to work, then we need to be able to move. Does that, does that make sense what I'm saying?
Absolutely.
Because I mean, you've got all these responsibilities, but there's nothing in here about firing rescue and police showing up, what happens then?
And who's in charge?
I've been on scenes where, you know, depending on what's going on, the fire chief isn't in charge.
Right.
And if there's not a fire hazard, then I'm in charge.
Right.
But the fire chief still thinks he's in charge, so it becomes.
So what, your point is not so much that the principal is no longer in charge, it's determining who among the service persons.
Well, I mean, if it's a fire.
It's a fire.
Fire chief.
Right.
If it's a shooting, it's law enforcement.
Right.
Any type of other medical issues, it's the rescue squad. But instead of being the incident commander until everybody shows up, I think the principal needs to drop back to a liaison position. Because right now, you still have him listed as the incident commander.
Right.
And if you go with policy, and something happens, then.
Then we're responsible.
Then you're responsible, because you don't have in there that law enforcement's in charge.
That's one of the reasons that we asked the board to take a look at it. Thank you. Good point. Any others?
Board members, any other questions?
Okay, the next item on our agenda is, we have now received the, our accountability and testing results from the state, and I'm going to ask Ms. Hendrick if she would come up and give the first presentation related to that. It's good news.
So I pulled data from the Virginia Department of Education, the preliminary accreditation results, and the school quality profile. So if you look at the chart and the map of the state of Virginia here, you can see that Mecklenburg is in a really great place. It goes off by your shading, so your red is your zero to 69 percent, and this is for all students, so it's all your groups together. And we're right there in the middle, right around the 70, like the 75 to 79 percent. And around us, you can see that we actually have a high pass rate compared to those around us in Region Eight. And I have more specific data in regards to each school as we go through the slides. For your Caucasian students, you can see that our percentage of pass rate goes up, that goes up, and again, we have a higher percentage pass rate in relation to those counties around us. For your Asian students, again, we have a high percentage of pass rate for that. The whites means that the population was just too small to count towards your accreditation. For your Hispanic students, we fall, we fell again to an 85 to 89 percent, a great standing in relation to those counties around us in Region Eight. And the state altogether, you see there's a high number of counties there in red, which is your zero to 69 percent pass rate. And your African-American students, again, around us, a lot of red. So we are in a great place in regards to passing for your African-American students, for your reading SOLs. Now, your students with disabilities, you should notice the whole map is red. And this is, next couple of slides, you're going to see that this needs to be an area of focus for us, but it is an area of focus needed for the entire state. And then your economically disadvantaged, again, a lot of us, a lot of the counties around us are in that 69 percent and below. Well, we're not, we're above that. So again, looks great compared to those around us. So as a whole, how are we performing over the last three years and with the results for this year? So our reading, 78 percent, right there with the state average. It was staying pretty consistent as last year, but an actual increase over the last three years. Our writing performance went up to 75 percent, just 1 percent lower than the state average. And you can see that the state average actually decreased last year just by 2 percent. So again, we're right where we've been consistent all along, an increase from 2016-17, but right around where other divisions in the state are going. Math, we actually saw a huge increase from 2016, from 77 percent to 85 percent. So we are above the state average in math, which is great, they're at 82 percent. For our science performance, we're at 79 as a division, state is at 81, but that is actually an increase from last year, from 76 to 79 percent. And then our history performance, history saw a decrease in the state, 4 percent. We also saw a small decrease as well, but it's right along with what the state saw. And a lot of this comes into factors of where now, the students who you don't need to take an SOL, they don't have to take it. So a lot of their students, once they get to U.S. history, they have met that SOL requirement, and they're not testing now. So unfortunately, that has had an effect on that pass rate, but still, we're at 76 percent. So we're right in, we're still in a really good place with that score. For each school, all schools are fully accredited, so each school is either at a Level One, Two, or Three, and you're going to see in each group, you have your academic achievement in English and math, you have your gap groups in English and math, you're going to see your information on science, chronic absenteeism. This is Chase City Elementary, fully accredited, Level One in everything, except that one gap group, which is your English. Now, to be at a Level One, you have to be above the state benchmark for English, which is 75 percent, and then math and science is 70 percent. So for here, for this data, this is just Level Ones all the way across the board, academic in English, math, science, and then your chronic absenteeism at the bottom. So your passing is the first column, you'll see the number of tests given, I mean, sorry, the number of passing tests. Then you have your recovery. So these are the students that did not pass the SOL previously but passed this year. And then you're going to have your growth. These are the number of students who did not pass the SOL, but they showed growth. And then your total test. So for English academic, the pass rate for your Chase City Elementary is 75, leaves them at one, Level One. For your math, they're at 88, which is an increase of 7 percent from last year, again at Level One. Science is 86, which is also Level One. And their chronic absenteeism, so the students who are missing more than 10 percent of class time is at 10 percent for Chase City Elementary. Now, when you look at the Level Two area, that was our gap group, these are the areas that Chase City needs to focus on for the upcoming school year. The indicators are for black students, economically disadvantaged, and students with disabilities. We saw across the state that the students with disabilities was a population we all needed to focus on. For the current year, for your black population, it was a 65 percent pass rate, economically disadvantaged was 67, and your students with disabilities was 59. So we actually saw an increase in the students with disabilities population to 59. And they do take increases in growth into consideration when looking at your accreditation standards. Clarksville is completely green, they are Level One in all areas. They're, saw an increase in English to 85 percent, they saw an increase in math to 94 percent, they saw an increase in science to 94 percent, that was about an eight, 7 percent increase, and their chronic absenteeism above 10 percent is at 9.93 percent. I didn't, I didn't include any gap group information on that since they're all at Level One. La Crosse, again, you're going to look at that achievement gap group of English, that is the only one sitting at Level Two for them. So on your English, they are at 79.57 percent, pretty consistent with what they were last year. They saw an increase in math to 91.53 percent. Science is up to 88.33 percent, and their, excuse me, absenteeism is at 11.65 percent. So all of those are at Level One. And there are two areas, indicators of needed growth, are the black population at 70 percent, excuse me, and the students with disabilities at 47 percent. South Hill Elementary, they're green except for the Level Two in achievement gaps of English. They are at 84 percent for your English, 95 with math, 95 percent in science, and absenteeism is 11.99. Sorry. Their, their indicators are also your black population and your students with disabilities, but you can see they had a 24 percent increase in their student with disabilities. Bluestone Middle School, they are green, they have one Level Two, achievement gap of English. They saw an increase in English to 79, they saw a math increase to 91, they saw a small increase in science to 78, but their chronic absenteeism is at 13.98 percent. Thank you. Bluestone Middle School, there are three indicators keeping them at a Level Two, it's going to be your black population at 70 percent, students with disabilities, it wasn't increased, but it sits at 44 percent, and your economically disadvantaged at 72 percent. Parkview Middle School is right on par with the other schools that you've seen. They have Level Ones everywhere except for your achievement gap of English is sitting at a Level Two. Their English is at 82, consistent with what it was reported last year, an increase in math to 91, and an increase in science to 83 percent, and they had a decrease in their absenteeism, so that's gotten better at 9.89 percent. They, indicator of keeping them at a Level Two for their achievement gap is their students with disabilities. They saw a decrease in that to 58.62 percent. Bluestone High School has a few areas of Level Two and a Level Three, so they need to focus on their achievement gaps in English, math, absenteeism, and their dropout rate. So for the achievement gap in English, it is at 81.25 percent. Academic math was an increase to 73.67 percent, and their academic achievement in science was an increase to 72.79 percent. So these are all still at Level One. The levels, graduation at index, they are Level One right now is at 84 percent, so that is their graduation rate. Their dropout rate decreased to 10.48 percent, that is right now at a Level Two. And then their college and career readiness index, that's not going to be used in accreditation yet until 21, 22, but that is right now considered a Level Two. Their chronic absenteeism is at 33.99 percent, and that is sitting at a Level Three. Bluestone High School, their achievement gap areas in English, it's going to be your students with disabilities again, they did see an increase in their pass rate to 63.16 percent. Students with disabilities in math to 54, and economically disadvantaged, there was also an increase, but to 67. Parkview High School is green in all areas at Level One. They saw English, it is a small decrease to 83.52 percent, but still at Level One. decrease to eighty-three point fifty-two percent, but still at Level One. Math was an increase to eighty-three percent. Science was an increase to seventy-three point ninety-two percent. And their absenteeism is at a Level One of twenty point zero-three percent. And that is a Level One there because they showed growth. So if you show a ten percent growth in that, you can go to Level One instead of Two. Their graduation index, their graduation rate, ninety-two point fifty-five percent. Their dropout rate was three point forty-eight percent. And their College and Career Readiness Index is eighty-three point zero-eight percent. A couple great things that have been kind of going on, in our comprehensive instructional program that we've been participating in, they have looked at the top-performing teachers in our region. They look at the highest pass rates for the students, or for this teacher, specifically ones with students with disabilities and economically disadvantaged. So there's thirty-nine districts in the comprehensive instructional program, fifteen divisions on the East Cohort, twenty-three teachers in Mecklenburg were recognized, one at Chase City, one at Clarksville, five at South Hill Elementary, two at Bluestone Middle, eleven at Parkview Middle, two at Parkview High, and two at Bluestone High School. So these teachers are being invited to participate in a cohort, to kind of share their strategies, collaborate with other cohort teachers, and then bring those strategies back to Mecklenburg to share with their colleagues. And two of the schools, so out of fifteen districts participating, only eleven schools were chosen. Mecklenburg actually has two being recognized for their gains with students with disabilities, and that is South Hill Elementary. They went from a forty point sixty-three percent pass rate to a sixty-four point fifty-two percent pass rate. So that was a twenty-four percent gain. And then Parkview High School was being recognized with math, from a thirty-eight point zero-three percent pass rate to a sixty-four point eighty-six percent pass rate. So that's a twenty-seven percent gain. So these building-level administrators are also being invited to participate in a cohort, attend a meeting in October in a work session, where they can share with other administrators that are participating in the cohort, their strategies and what they're doing to be successful in their buildings. You have any questions?
I'd like, if you go back just to that piece, I don't know if you can, yeah. This is significant, because we have now, with our accountability, a huge change in the way schools are held accountable and the way that they're rated, as being fully accredited or not. And even the schools that are all green, everyone is going, every school division is going, school is going to have to have a growth plan in place at the state level, even if it's all green, issuing, looking at what they're going to be doing to make improvements. The growth plan is something that we've studied as administrators all through last year, for personal use, as well as for our schools, with our teachers, with custodians, with everybody else. There's evaluation programs that we have in place and that have responded to you all, as far as our plan for the year is based on this growth model. And the state, even though the program that she's pointed out right here, the state is also focusing on growth models, for discipline, for attendance, for scores. And they're looking at growth modeling programs that have been identified as outstanding because of the work the teachers have done in the classroom, or that the schools have performed. So having this number of our teachers and schools selected to be a part of this part is really very indicative of the good work that many of our folks are doing. And our own teachers, as well as others, will be looking and saying, what are you doing well? How do we incorporate those plans into our own lesson plans and working with those? So we're very pleased with these invitations and with these results. Do you have any questions?
Yes.
Board members, do you have any questions?
I have one. Ms. Garner?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry. Ms. Hendrick, I do have one. My concern was absenteeism at Bluestone High School. Is there any particular reason why that was such a high number, at thirty-three percent?
I don't know for a specific reason if that was such a high number, but I know that was the building-level administrators go on and create their school improvement plans for that, for the upcoming school year, that asked for that to be a contributing factor to their performance.
So they will look at that and try to, you know, make sure that that will decrease before, during the school year?
Correct.
Many things taken into consideration for that piece of it. Ultimately, we anticipate that the state will add discipline, they'll add other parts, and that's why we're trying to come up with these programs, to keep students more engaged in the process. Yes. We also have our AP results from this past year, the first year that we had AP in place. I think we can pull those results up. There were quite a few students who took them. We let them know from the beginning that being able to, or taking the test would be something that would be at their choice. There's no requirement for that, because you can't require what the school division doesn't pay for. And the fact that they are identified as AP means that they're taking a very rigorous program of study. So we have those results, AP tests given at both Bluestone and at Parkview, and some results. Ms. Hendrick, if you want to move with that?
So the AP test at Bluestone High School, in English eleven, the students took the English eleven in Composition, and then also U.S. History. At Parkview High School, in eleventh grade, students took English eleven, Composition, and U.S. History. And then twelfth grade students took the Statistics AP exam. So at Bluestone High School, there were a total of nineteen students who took the AP exam. The school's scores of three and higher were at five point three percent. So we had seven students who scored a one, eleven students who scored a two, and one student who scored a three. For United States History, only two students opted to take the test. Both those students scored a one. At Parkview High School, we had six students who opted to take the test. Two of their students scored a one, three of them scored a two, and one of their students scored a four. And for the U.S. History, we had six students at Parkview High School, again, three students scored a one, one student scored a two, and two students scored a three. The AP statistics, we had four students total at Parkview High School who took the test, one student scored a one, and two students scored a three, and then one of those students scored a four. For the upcoming school year, for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, Bluestone High School currently has eleven students enrolled in English eleven, AP, twelve, nine students enrolled in English twelve, AP, and twenty-two students enrolled in AP, U.S. History. For Parkview High School, there are twenty-four students enrolled in English eleven, AP, five students enrolled in English twelve, AP. United States History, eleventh grade is twenty-four students. Political Science and Government AP is five. And then we do have one student enrolled in Virtual Virginia Statistics. So those are the number of students who have the ability to take the AP test, if they opt to do so, for the upcoming school year.
So with that, the numbers that took the tests were not high. The results are not what we are going to become. You know, our goal is to be able to more and more build the program from middle school all the way up, so that the preparation will be much better. Again, I think as we begin the process, one thing we do get from this is each of the teachers were teaching at a level that students were able to get into the qualifying range. Qualifying score simply means that the colleges count the qualifying result as indicative of having successfully taken it at a college, what is deemed to be college curricular, and could get some support for it from the schools that they attend. If it's not qualifying, it doesn't mean that they failed. That's not a, you don't fail an AP exam. It simply means that it was a level of rigor, and the student's mastery of it may not yet have been at what the universities determine. But that has nothing to do with the grade that they get in the class. The grade for the class is separate. So, you know, this is the first year, and there's room for growth, and we're going to be looking for growth as we move along. Comments?
Board members, do you have any questions?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Garner, the floor is yours.
I got a lot of questions about this, so I'm just going to start from the beginning. One of the questions was, how many students took AP classes? I just say here, why, who paid for the classes? Do they, students have to pay for their own tests?
For the test, yes.
Why is there a low number of Parkview students taking the test compared to Bluestone students taking the test?
I don't know. It's an option that the students have, whether they choose to take the test or not. It could be that the financial component of it is a factor. It could be that in taking it the first time, they realized that the test would be difficult, and they didn't want to come out of it with a low score.
Were the students at Parkview aware that they could get DE credit for the classes that they were taking?
If the teacher was certified, and I think in both instances, the teacher was certified as having the requirements to be a DE teacher, then they did get, as they passed the class, they got the dual enrollment credit.
Did the students at Bluestone have the same option?
Yes.
Did they get the option?
It's...
In English, they did not grab?
I...
Did not have a teacher that had a master's degree or a DE teacher?
That was, that's one of the reasons that we were looking at moving, is because we were finding it more difficult to find the teachers with those options, yes, but with that certification for the community college. And we wanted to make sure they still had the option for a good college preparatory program. I'd have to go back and check and see if the English teacher last year at Bluestone was certified or not. You apparently know that that teacher was not, okay.
That's a lot of questions. If the students do not want to take AP, is there a DE class or an honest class that these students at Bluestone can take?
Well, if...
I know right now there is not. The students that drop these classes are put into a general English class. There is no honest class, and there is no DE class for these accelerated students.
Well, if, as far as a DE is concerned, if we don't have the teacher that's certified, it's been very difficult. Now, we can look at that and certainly look to make a connection, as we did last year, with the biology from one school to another. But we can't, we can't do that from the community colleges' perspective unless they are certified.
The AP slash DE classes are set up at Parkview. They're not set up that way at Bluestone, except for History. They only have the option to take AP English at Bluestone. So therefore, it's either they take the AP English, or they take the general English. They have no choice in between.
Well, again, that would be primarily because the teacher there has not got the certifications, and we haven't been able to find someone. Now, again, we could look at making connections of some type and try to cover it that way.
All right. The next question is, what is the largest class at Parkview Masco in English? Number six, largest number.
Ms. Swain, would you have any information?
Do you mean in AP DE or just English period?
English period.
Twenty-seven.
So twenty-five is my number.
That's higher than twenty-five, twenty-seven, twenty-five now.
You don't have any classes, twenty-nine or twenty-eight?
Off the top of my head, with all the schedule changes we've done the past week, I'm not sure to that. I can move up and get back with you.
All right, next question. I was led to believe that students in the ninth and tenth grade at Bluestone that are looking into going to Governor's School may not have the credits to graduate with an associate's degree if they go to Governor's School. Is this something that we can look into, or is this something because they don't have classes at Bluestone? Or does that any reason why this would happen?
I can only imagine, because I know the Governor's School is set up to offer the same offerings on either side. So if it's a matter of, well, they have had classes in ninth or tenth grade that were dual enrollment classes, then we will certainly look into it to see if the two together would count. I do know, and that the requirements of the state to meet the expectations of their accreditation agencies have made it more difficult for schools to offer dual enrollment earlier than the eleventh grade. And that has, we had mentioned before, that has an impact on what we've been able to offer, as well as the situation with the teacher's certification. So we will have to look into that piece to see if they have it. One of the things that we have done is opened up the opportunities for students to be able to take community college classes on their own, but we count them towards our high school certifications for their classes. And that's in order to help with the personalized learning opportunities that are out there, and could make up for things that they may have been deficient for from not having the dual enrollment classes available by having our teachers teach them.
Okay. Next question. How many students from Parkview, not counting Governor's School students, will receive their associate's degree from Parkview?
Ms. Swain, do you have any idea?
We think it's about twenty-four.
Okay. How many students from Bluestone will get their associate's degree, not counting Governor's School?
Well, Ms. Wilkerson is...
Ms. Wilkerson, I can answer your question. I was interviewing nobody. There's not a student from Bluestone attending an associate's degree this year. The last question, which they won't be able to answer, but that the person wanted to know. The children of the school board members, are they on track to take DE classes and get an associate's degree that the students at Bluestone will not get? That's the question being called.
What kind of question is that?
Well...
What are you trying to say?
You have to listen to what I have said.
I'm sitting right here, I can hear what you're saying.
This is definitely a disproportionate part of the education in this county. One end of the county is getting more opportunities than the other. And I'd say, these are questions that came up, and they wanted addressed, especially after the AP scores came. And also, I will tell, and I've told the Education Committee today, if by January of next school year, if something is not changed to make it equal in this county, I am going to recommend that we give no associate's degree after this school year, if it cannot be worked out.
Does that mean we'd have to get rid of the wrestling team in Bluestone, too?
Mr. Regich.
You know what I'm talking about.
I know, yeah, I know what you're talking about, but we provide opportunities wherever we can. We don't intentionally neglect anybody.
I have a question, Ms. Garner.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell, yes, sir.
Don't you sit on that board? Aren't you aware of the testing? Aren't you aware of the process?
I was aware that we had AP classes, yes.
I wasn't finished with my question.
Okay.
Aren't you aware of how they're picked, by their grades, and by their testing scores?
You're talking Governor's School?
Governor's School, yes.
Oh, I'm not aware of Governor's School. That's not what I'm talking about.
That's what you just said. Your last question was, are school board members' children getting preference over Governor's School for associate's degree?
No, I was scratching. I'm talking about Bluestone and Parkview. Governor's School is different. They take the test to... They take the test to get into governor's school. I'm talking the disparity, disparity between Parview-
You're talking about DE?
Yes, well, just in this county, we have no associate's degree because of, I believe it's the English. But last year, Parview would not have had kids graduating with associate's degree because they didn't have a DE biology teacher. We transferred a biology teacher from Blue Stone to Parview and they Skyped from one school to the other, but the same arrangement was not made for the English of Blue Stone. That's what I'm saying. The kids are not being treated equally in this county. And I, I just feel like we're doing half the county wrong.
Ms. Honor, we Skyped English from Parview to Blue Stone last year so those students could receive the same opportunities.
But they didn't get the DE credit?
Yes, ma'am, they did. Last year, not this year. Last year, Miss Ritchie Skyped to Miss Jones's 11th grade English class for them to get that DE credit.
But they're not the ones that don't graduate this year. They're the ones graduated last year.
Which is exactly what we did with those with the science. Those were the only the ones that graduated last year.
Are you doing it this year?
No, ma'am, because I want to Skype in any place.
It's one thing, there will not be any associate's degree from Blue Stone this year because they do not have teachers that are teaching on the level to get the DE credit.
I, I certainly appreciate the, your concern. We would be concerned for equal opportunity in all situations. I, I will say that we recognized several years ago that being able to continue with our dual enrollment options was going to become more and more limited through the years because of several factors, one of them being the more limited number of teachers that had the full certification of, to meet the expectations of the community college for certification. And we had conversation with parents and students before last year, saying that it was gonna, that we would not be able to promise students that they'd have the option while in high school, through the high school, to be able to get the dual enrollment. And that's one of the reasons that we were looking to move to the AP option so that we could make sure we were still offering all students the best preparation for college. The, earning the associate degree, while it has been a great opportunity for many students, I, I think we've seen by the number of students that have perhaps looked to take a dual or tried to take a dual enrollment class rather than an AP class, as you look at separating them, shows that the AP is more rigorous in its content. And, and that adjustment may be what we're having to deal with, is that transition. I think we will find that that's a matter that's more up to the, the teacher and what's being taught in the dual enrollment. There are some dual enrollment classes that are every bit as rigorous as an AP class. They may not have an exam at the end that is able to show the results. We want to support our students in every way that we possibly can. It is difficult to, to, to create the expectation and requirements. I know we've had some conversation about the additional expectations of the community college with their accreditation agencies that causes us to have lost the opportunity for some teachers who had been teaching dual enrollment, who could no longer teach dual enrollment after their accreditation standards were considered. And I know that we have had some concerns, although we haven't seen it come to pass, about costs of dual enrollment go up, that we would no longer be able to afford them, and that was a consideration as well. But as far as whether the, whether the students received dual enrollment credit or not, one place or another, we don't give the certification for dual enrollment. That's something that comes from the community college itself, not from, from our agencies. So, you know, I, I think we'll have to take a good, strong look at it and try to make sure that, you know, anything that's given an opportunity on one side may, we'll do everything we can to make it available on the other. And so your point is, is taken and I appreciate those that have been concerned about it.
Mr. Nichols also have a strong concern and I, I do understand a portion of what Mrs. Garner was talking about. We have the technology in MCPS to be, and we have the teachers available in both buildings for these DE courses in one place or the other, where we need to be Skyping those things in to these schools so every student in this county has the same opportunity to succeed. So instead of us saying, you know, why we can't do it, tell me how we can do it. Again, we have those DE teachers at one place or the other for all of these subjects.
Right.
So until we can build that AP for whatever reason, we need to still have these, give these kids an opportunity to take these DE classes for those that do want to take the DE. Because even some of the most advanced students in the AP classes, you know, they might be an accelerated student, but still be in a predicament where they couldn't afford to take the test.
Right.
So, I mean, it could be, you know, accelerating student, but, you know, we need to do that, act on it right now.
Well, and I agree. And that's, you heard Ms. Swain say that we used the Skype last year.
Well, we need to be doing it now for English, for history, for, for whatever subject, DE subject that we need, because those teachers are in the county, they're in our buildings. We need to do it now.
We'll be looking into that. Thank you. Any other questions? Another thing that has been brought up, I know, and as we've had conversation, is the idea of better preparing our students early, and that's a goal that we have for the year as well, to begin looking at that and how to build those into the, even into the middle school.
Just one other comment.
Ms. Bailey?
I, I just became aware, Ms. Garner and I met with Mr. Nichols today as being part of the instruction committee, and I was unaware that the community colleges can no longer confer credit to a ninth or 10th grader. Apparently that, that's, that's something new that we really have not dealt with. And that's how anyone in Mecklenburg County was able to get an associate's degree over the last-
They have to start pretty early.
Over the last, I'm trying to remember when my first one got, it's been a long time ago. As y'all know, I've had several do, got, come through, but, um, because to, to do all that coursework in two years would require maybe some classes over the summer, which would have to come at the expense of, of the families. So, you know, that, that's a wrinkle in this whole situation that we really had not, I really didn't know about until today, frankly, so.
Who, did the community college contact us and tell us that?
It's been a general statement as-
It has been, but I-
I don't, I don't know that we've gotten direct instruction that we could no longer be able to do that. It was-
I thought the chancellor granted that on a case-by-case basis and I thought South-
We'll have to look into that more and more.
For those.
It's-
God, it's canceled, no.
It's my understanding, Mr. Nichols, that that is still being offered, that that is the case. I've got some numbers here of the students who took dual enrollment for, um, God, fall of eighteen, spring of nineteen, and it's my understanding that all of those are still being counted.
What do you mean they're being?
You mean like the HPE nine being counted as a dual enrollment or something else?
Yes, sir.
We'll, we'll go back and look at that and see.
Okay.
Ultimately, I think the real question that we need to be considering is the quality of the class and is it, is it a college class that's being offered? Because that's, that's what they're saying that they're getting, is a college level class in the high school arena. And, and, you know, that's what the universities are looking for. I think that's where some of the pressure is coming from on the, the college systems, the community college is, you know, transferability and, and making sure that, that's there, that the students are getting the rigorous preparation that they need to be successful in college. That's ultimately what we're looking for, is that the students are really getting well prepared for college as opposed to what they might be able to get free in college.
Well, I assume that most of those DE credits, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, but a lot of those are prereqs, you know, going into college, especially if they're declaring a major. You know, they, if they, if they graduate at high school, Ms. Hendrick, maybe you can help me, if they graduate from high school and earn an associate's degree, most of that associate's degree are prereqs that they would take, especially if they were declaring a major as a junior going in to a college.
Yeah, most of them are going to transfer as prereqs. They're still going to apply as a freshman and be entered as a freshman student, and most of them will go into your prereqs, your basic English and your history.
Yes, ma'am.
Most, sometimes your math and your science, your pre-calc, those science courses will end up turning into general electives, depending on the college major.
Okay. Thank you for your questions, Ms. Garner. Anything else for Ms. Hendrick?
Thank you.
Okay. All right, item I, um, excuse me, item H is the new middle school, high school update, and I have listed for you a report, the latest that came out just last week from SCANSCA, which will giving us, be giving us updates each month. Basically, as we're in the, the bidding process right now, we've been told and we've already announced to you and also have taken it to the board of supervisors, that the architects and SCANSCA had recognized that the builders, the construction agencies would not be able to complete construction in the timeframe that would allow us to go in, in 2021, '22 school year. So we are looking at now backing it up to 22, 21, '22, '22, '23. And so that's disappointing, but we are very anxious that we have the quality that goes in. We're also very anxious about the bidding climate that we have right now. It is very hot, I think is the term that is primarily used. We have a budget that has been given to us and the, the funding estimates that were given to put that budget in place were based on numbers that had been given to the architects statewide at that time. Since then, there's so much construction going on and so we are waiting, and you can see new dates for opening of the bids and so forth from the SCANSCA report. We are waiting to, to get those bids in and see what we'll have to work with. We're hoping to get several companies competing. We're hoping to give them as much time as possible so that they won't be pressured and that we can know that the quality is going to go in. But I'll, you'll get a summary like this each month as we go along. At this point, I do not anticipate we'll have a groundbreaking ceremony until early October, from what we're hearing from them.
Weeds.
And the weeds are that tall. We'll see about getting those cut. Any questions about that? Um, item I, we've also, I put on here, we had a marketing committee report, uh, meeting this past week after the board selected the mascot. The colors are important to go along with the mascot. The architects are very anxious to be able to get that information so that they can include that in the materials that will be going to the contractors. And so the, the, the members of the marketing committee in meeting actually are making a recommendation. Mr. Honeycutt is on that committee. I don't know if you want to mention the meeting or not, but-
Yes, sir.
Okay, there's a, there's a recommendation to go along with the mascot of the Phoenix that, and this also comes from recommendations from the marketing group that's, we're working with, that would the colors be black, red and white. And you don't have to choose to vote on that tonight, but voting on that tonight would help us with the architects and getting some of this information out in place. And if that would be the case, then we will soon be able to bring to your attention a recommendation of drawings with those colors that would go to the marketing committee and within two or three weeks, they'll be able to bring back official mascots for us that we would be in a position to be able to move forward with and that will belong to us. So that's just a, a recommendation from the, the marketing committee and you can make your choice on that tonight or not. Any questions about that or comments?
I thought we were going to stay away from red.
Uh, did we mention that? I'm not-
I don't remember that. Why is that? I don't remember talking about it, any colors, really.
The game colors. They're going to try to stay away from red.
Well, again, and-
And the yellows or-
And, Mr. Nichols, if I may, in talking in that, it's many variations if you look at a color chart of red. I, I don't think it'll be a, the art teachers are working on that, they're bringing back some drawings with some colors, but I don't know if it'll be a true, like ruby red, but I believe it'll be in the red family somewhere and that's, you know, going along, enlisting with the consultant. And again, we're trying to pick a color, looking at the schools and the divisions that we would be playing, since we'll be a larger school once we combine, you know, looking at a 4A school, that, you know, we're trying to choose something that's not already in place. We definitely have picked the Phoenix, something new, we're rising up out of the ashes, we're being new, and again, we're trying to have our own brand, I guess you want to say.
Right. And that was a flaming type of red to go along-
Yes, it was like an orangey red.
Orangey red as opposed to a red that some of the others might be looking at.
Right. Any board members have any comments?
So, so will the marketing committee be coming up with something soon or?
Yes.
It says, it's listed as an action item for tonight.
It's listed as an action item for the night for the colors, simply because it would help the marketing committee be able to pass on to the, to the company that we're working with, the opportunity to get that finalized so that we can get it to the architects and have even the new video rendering like we had before of a whole school appropriately done, instead of having to go back and, and redo some things. And as far as any other comments that I have, I just would like to remind everybody that we will be doing random drug testing beginning in September. There will be six options through the year, two at each of the seasons, for random type drug testing for both athletics and extracurricular activities. And that will begin in September.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Nichols. We're moving on to committee reports. Anybody, nobody's here from the, well, I am, but we don't have anything to report. Joint Education Committee.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir.
Do you have a date for a meeting? I know Mr. Sturdivan had requested one last month.
I asked Mr. Sturdivan on Friday and, um, Mrs. Lundie has been out of town and they're going to set up a meeting soon.
Yeah, I, I have asked Mrs. Lundie to set that and she said she's working on it, but she has not come back with a date for that.
I know she had been out of town.
Mr. Hayek, I have a request.
Yes, ma'am.
That when those meeting dates are set, even those persons who do not serve on the committee, that we as an entire board would be made aware of what those dates are.
Okay.
In the past, it's just been going out to the committee members and I, I think it would be nice to invite, just, not to invite, but just to let the whole board know when those meetings are in case they might want to attend.
I totally agree. And again, to keep things transparent to all the board members, if they have the opportunity to come to participate, because this is a big project.
Thank you.
Finance Committee met today at five o'clock. Mrs. Garner on that, and it is our recommendation that we pay the bills as were presented. School Safety Committee.
No, Mr. Honeycutt, before you leave that, I would also like to bring to your attention, all board members have been given a copy of the, the audit report on the school activity funds.
Yes, ma'am.
And there's a copy at each place for each of you to be able to see and review.
All right.
It was a very good audit that came back, audit report that came back. We passed, no questions, but it's there for you to review.
Okay, I'm sorry, thank you. Gifted and Talented Special Education Committee. CTE Career and Technical Education Committee. Athletics Committee.
No report.
No report. Instruction Committee.
I think what we talked about in the meeting, I brought up in the general meeting.
Okay.
One other thing, Ms. Garner, I did have a question that Ms-
One other thing, Ms. Garner, I did have a question that Ms. Swain was able to help me with. In the past, the Department of Education has required an online course for every graduate to have, and that requirement has been lifted with the profile of a Virginia graduate. Our students are no longer required to take an online course. Many of our students got that requirement through their personal finance and economics class, and that class was actually offered during the school day, on a school-issued laptop with school internet access, so that everyone had that opportunity. But we're no longer required to do that by the state, so I just wanted to make sure that if you've had kids in the high school that have done that, I guess that's great for them, they had that experience, but if you have another child coming, that is no longer a requirement. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew about that.
And the, the questions that you read, Ms. Garner, just so, I didn't, I was with you up until the very last one, you mentioned something about school board members' children. And what was, I don't think I understood that one completely. What was that one?
They just feel like, because all of your children go to Parkview, that they're getting, or they have an advantage that they don't have up here. They have classes, they have the associate, associate degree that they will get, where Bluestone gets to them.
Didn't Mr. Sturtevant...
That is totally different from Covensville. That's totally different.
But didn't Mr. Sturtevant's child be an associate student here?
No. But he, it did matter, it, for him, and his was a scheduling problem, but none of the classes that he took would have been submitted to the Negro Academy. So it, it didn't matter. But now, you're talking about the child that graduated last year. He's got a child in the ninth grade this year.
Yes, I'm talking about last year.
Yeah, he, he got over there, and he went to Covensville.
Yeah, I think his son's a seventh grade, isn't he?
But he did not graduate with an associate's degree. But he needed that because of a scheduling problem with Bluestone. But it didn't matter with him at all, because going to the Negro Academy, his associates wouldn't have been, they wouldn't have taken it.
Any other questions for the Instruction? Yes, ma'am.
I think that, that's all the Instruction Committee discussed today. Thank you, Ms. Garner.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, at this time, we are in public input. Do we have anybody signed to speak this evening?
Yes, we do. At this time, matters may be publicly brought to the attention of the board and administration. Public comment at board meetings are just one of many avenues for communication, and the board recognizes and appreciates the importance of input from and communication with the public we represent. The public is invited to sign up to speak. The clerk of the school board will write down your name, contact information, and the topic that you wish to speak about. The public is allowed up to six minutes at most meetings to express their views. Please respect that time limitation, it will be enforced. Please understand that it may not be possible to immediately respond to questions. As a reminder, it is inappropriate at a public meeting to make personal attacks, to be defamatory, or to disparage individuals or identifiable groups. Again, we welcome and appreciate your input. Prior to beginning your comment, please state your name to the board. Donna Wall.
Ms. Wall, if you'll come up to the podium, please. Mr. Jefferson, could you please turn on the light, the above her, please?
Good evening. I have a few questions regarding the AP statistics. I see that there's one individual for Parkview taking the Virtual Virginia statistics. We, my child is, has applied to take statistic. We thought it was going to be offered through the school at Parkview this year, and we put in a change form to try to get her in the class. We were not informed that the class wasn't going to happen. They started school, and then I found out that the class wasn't going to happen, and I have one question regarding that, because there were several students who were going to take it, and last year, I understand, there were only four in the class, and this year, we had more than that wanting to take the class, and the class is not going to happen, and Ms. Finnwick taught it, and she's still a teacher there, I assume, certified to teach the class, so I have a question about why it's not happening. Second of all, when it was not going to happen, why weren't these students who wanted to take it made aware that it wasn't going to happen, and that possibly they had another option? Because now I'm finding out that there was an option to take it online. That leads me to another question, is the online class paid for by the student, or paid for by the school, and also, does that contribute to their overall GPA? Or is that just contributed to their, getting their associate's degree, or college credits? I think that's, I think that's my main questions regarding the AP statistics, that I would, I'm very concerned about it, because, mainly because of the GPA, what it contributes to that.
Well, the, I, I'm not in a position to answer at what point they were or were not available. It's, each class, part of the issue for the class is the number of students that are, have signed up for it, and sometimes, there's many more that sign up for it than, than at the end, when the full schedule comes out. So, the school is the only ones that can really answer that particular question. As far as making them available online, the Virtual Virginia has been an option for a while. We, we recognize the Virtual Virginia as a program, but there is a cutoff date for that as well, and I, again, that would have to go back to counselors and others, and inquisitive, you know, inquiries about what might be available. They, Virtual Virginia, or any online class through the community college would carry a weight for them, because they are, they are considered to be advanced classes, and that there's a, they both, they count one, one credit, one hour. So, that's as much as I can answer for you at this point right now, but certainly, we want, do want to make always, in the handbook and in other places, make it available for students to know that there are options for them. This is becoming more and more a personalized learning process, and so, we, we, it's our goal to make sure that students know they have, they can look and be creative and find options that would best suit their needs.
Do you not feel that it's the responsibility of the counselors at the school to, to guide them and lead them to take the classes they need to achieve these goals?
Well, certainly, that is our hope, that the school counselors, you know, work with the...
Well, that's not what, that's not what's happening in your school.
Ms. Wall, if you would, if you would leave your information with our school board clerk, Mrs. Giomadio, and we'll have Mr. Nichols get back in touch with you.
Sure.
When he can do a little bit more investigative work to find out exactly what's going on, so he'll be able to answer your question fully.
Absolutely.
But the Virtual Virginia is no cost to anybody.
No, there's no cost for the Virtual Virginia.
Yeah, the, the school system doesn't pay anything, and the parents don't pay anything.
Right. Ms. Wall, thank you for your comments and your concern. Mrs. Giomadio, has anybody else signed up to speak?
No, that's everyone.
Okay. At this time, we're going to move on to our action items. Give me just a second, I'm sorry. Can I have a motion that the special meeting of the members of the school board held on July 8th, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
A motion from Ms. Garner, a second from Mr. Ritchie.
To approve the minutes.
To approve the minutes, I'm sorry.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Abstain.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes. The Finance Committee has made a recommendation to pay the bills.
Let's go to item A.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It's all right, you're good.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes from the special meeting on July the 11th.
Second.
Motion made, and Ms. Garner, a second by Mrs. Bailey.
Mr. Ritchie?
Abstain.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Abstain.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes from the regular meeting held on July 15th, 2019.
Second.
I have a motion from Mrs. Garner, a second from Mrs. Bailey.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Abstain.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes. Can I get a motion that the school board approve the minutes from the meeting held on July 29th, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion from Ms. Garner, a second from Mrs. Bailey.
Mr. Ritchie?
Abstain.
Mrs. Bailey? Mr. Campbell?
Abstain.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Can, and again, the Finance Committee met earlier, we've got a motion to approve the bills.
It doesn't require a second.
Excuse me, it doesn't require a second, yes.
It does not require a second.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes. Can I get a motion that the school board approves the personnel recommendations with the amendments?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Mrs. Bailey, a second from Mrs. Garner, we'll call.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes. Can I get a motion that the school board deems a listed textbooks as surplus?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion from Mrs. Garner, a second from Mr. Ritchie.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes. Can I get a recommendation that the school board move forward and approve the new mascot
I'd like to make a motion that we postpone that vote.
We have a motion to postpone, and Mrs. Garner, second in that discussion. Yes, I do. This is very crucial in the process of moving forward with our architects, and Mr. Dalton was conducting business at my place of business the other day, and they really want to get this moving forward, so we can include this in our new renderings, or our visual tours that we will take of the new school. Again, we're on a timeline here, and I didn't realize how big this was until I was at that meeting Friday, and the representative from Herff Jones was there, and it's a lot to consider in moving forward with these new colors in our mascot, and I think the quicker we do this, the better off we'll be in moving forward.
I, I'm not opposed to the colors that you put out there, but typically, we put something out one, as an information item, one meeting, and then we vote on it the next meeting, which gives the public a chance to react, and that's what we're, that's what we're not doing tonight. We just got heard for the first time tonight, and now we're being asked to vote on it tonight, and the public hasn't had a chance to weigh in on that, so that's my, that's why I asked for it to be postponed.
And Mr. Nichols, are we putting out a mock survey of any type about the school colors?
It's, it's been recommended, again, and we're going very much by the recommendations of the experts that are working with us on this, it's been recommended that we really look at colors that match the choice of the mascot, which is the reason that it's been put off along with this. So, you know, it, it's not a, there will not be a survey that will go out for this.
I mean, Ms. Garner, we're staying, stay away from red because of gang affiliation, is that right?
That's what I was told, that, that was one of the calls.
What are the colors of Bluestone?
What they're saying, away, blue, gold, green, and red. They were the four colors that they recommended not include.
So what if a new gang pops up that says they want, I mean, it, it's a never-ending story. I mean, we're just going to have to pick something that makes us happy and go with it, and I mean, I don't think that anybody's going to consider gang affiliation when it's the whole county. That is my opinion.
So, there's a motion on the floor to postpone, and a second.
I call for the vote.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
No.
Mr. Campbell?
No.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Mr. Vice Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the colors that have been recommended.
I need a second.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the colors, as Mr. Nichols presented them this evening, and a second, I have a motion from Mrs. Bailey, and a second from Mr. Palmer. Madam Clerk, we'll call. Oh, Mr. Campbell, I'm sorry.
Close.
Yeah.
He's such a guy.
I know. I was looking at the wrong name tag. Madam Clerk, I'm sorry.
Mr. Ritchie?
No.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
No.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Reminders, coming up, August 30th, Labor Day holiday, schools are closed. September the 2nd, Labor Day holiday, schools are closed. On September 12th, we have parent-teacher conference at our high school from 4:15 to 6:30 PM, and our regular school board meeting will be held on September 16th. And I believe that's all the reminders, and now it's time for our school board member remarks, and Mrs. Garner, we'll start with you this evening.
I think I've said enough to say.
Mr. Ritchie? Mrs. Bailey?
Yes, I'm glad to hear that the breakfast and lunch participation at the elementary schools is going well. That was my, my, my guess, is that people would really jump on board with that the first week, or first two weeks of school, and I hope that the food is good and the participation won't drop off after that. And I just wanted to, to make a suggestion, and I don't know if this makes any sense, but I think each local school, each elementary school, that the cafeteria directors know what their kids like to eat, and some are, have their favorites, so I'm hoping that there might be some flexibility in choosing those menus, so that the cafeteria managers can kind of tweak their menus to, to appeal to, to their students, and therefore, keep participation at a high level, so that we can continue that. And number two, we're at the beginning of, of the school year, and it's a great time to create new habits at home, and I would encourage all parents to just set aside a time at night where you can sit down and read with your child, have your child read to you, or read to their siblings. Now's the time of year to create those habits, and, or read in the car on the way to wherever you're going. Our kids just need to be reading more and more, so they can get better and better.
Thank you, Mr. Honeycutt.
Mr. Campbell?
No.
I just want to say, first of all, it's so good to see Mrs. Dalton back with us tonight. We missed you the last couple of months, but it's just, we're glad to see you back this evening, yes, ma'am. And it seems like it's been a smooth transition. Last week, we've heard a lot of great things, we saw a lot of great progress from last year, and I commend all of our administrators for the work that you all have done. And in closing, I just want to say that I am so glad that in three years, we will be combined, so we can no longer say that one end of the county gets this, and the other end of the county gets that. I don't know what we'll have to fess in view about then, but I might, they might figure out something, but anyways, but it's just a blessing that all of us will be under one roof, one roof, and we will be successful together, we'll be united. So, with that being said, can you get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, good night.